Start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and the flag.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know we have a lot to go over this evening. I'd like everybody to sign in first. We are going to be videotaping this and also Channel 6 is here. Are you going to be filming it also? Everyone that's going to speak, I hope that you've signed in. I'd like to make a motion before -- for my colleagues to move the PFC ordinance zoning up to be the very first thing on the agenda items.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Do I hear any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I know a lot of people want to -- I see you signing it. I'm sort of -- if you notice, I'm taking it is easy to let you sign in first. However, um... Anybody -- how many people here are going to want to say something? Raise your hands.
With regards to the...
Only in regards to the PFC, to the ordinance. That's all?
You got a couple in the back.
I saw that. I saw the hands in the back. All right. In order to maintain a sense of balance, and there's not that many of you, instead of the usual three minutes, I'm going to give you five minutes. Okay? By the way, I will say, though, you only get the one chance to start with. You don't get to come up twice to the microphone until everyone has given their talk or what they want to talk about. Then, if you have something to say the second time around, I'll entertain you up again for that issue. Also, the school district and its counterparts, the people that are here with them, they are going to answer because some of your questions are duplicative. So, we don't have them answering the same question three and four and five times in a row. I'm going to -- we're going to hear all your questions and then they're going to answer them. And if they don't answer them, then we'll bring them up and you can say, "Well, you didn't answer my question. You didn't do that." We're going to bring that.
Fred, this is important, and people should have their say. We should have as much time as necessary at the point of...
Right. You're right.
I don't think so.
You're not making the rules. You're not making the rules. I've seen people paraphrase that hour.
You're out of order, Mr. Keller.
They can only come up there for three to five minutes.
Mr. Keller, you're out of order. I'm running the meeting.
You better run it better than this.
Mr. Keller.
How can anybody...
Sit down, Mr. Keller.
Mr. Keller.
Sit down, Mr. Keller.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Thank you.
These are our properties, okay? And this is a big deal. You should have more than five minutes. I'm going to take more than five minutes.
Five minutes per person.
Well, then, you should extend it somewhere else. You have to. This is an important story. This is a democracy, remember?
Fred, I'd like to do an introduction if you don't...
Go ahead.
I'm the sort of the zoning guy here, if you will, ordinances and such. And I did play a part in modifying...
Get air now.
Sorry about that.
Why don't you come in so you can hear? The front door's open.
They're here. They're here.
All right. As I was starting to say, I did play a part in meeting with the school district to see how we could accommodate their needs in modifying the current zoning of the Meadowbrook property, which is currently, as we sit here, is owned for residential, R2, roughly a half an acre per residential unit. That alone makes it, unfortunately, for the school district, a more expensive proposition than a lower-density zoning might make it. In any event, you know, the main purpose of this meeting here is to discuss the ordinance. And I want to try to make it clear that there is -- there should be in your minds a distinction between what the -- how the ordinance reads and your concerns about, shall we say, amenities or any other development of issues that would normally fall under a preliminary plan review. We have not had a preliminary plan review done yet, at least in front of the board. So, that's the next step. That's the next step. The zoning ordinance has to be passed before we really proceed with that.
Fine, Jim.
And at that point, you all will get a second chance to make comments.
You mentioned what I was going to mention, too. Remember now, this is not a legal issue. This is nothing that we're going to do as far as a hearing is concerned, a zoning hearing board or such like that whatsoever. This is a legislation issue of what we're taking care of. So, as Jim had said, it's only for the ordinance, not for the planning portion of it. Mr. McCurry, in what he said, "If you need more than five minutes, I will give you more than five minutes, but in your five minutes, you've got to stipulate what you're going to say. Don't get into a long tirade, a bunch of a lot of, excuse me, crap or perifia that doesn't need to be said. If you have issues, state the issues so we can answer the damn issues." So, if you have to have more than five minutes, if you have a longer thing to talk about, talk about them. We're here to hear everything you have to say. But we don't want a lot for -- carry on a couple of hours of stuff that you're just trivia, okay? We don't need that. All right. First person up?
Oh, excuse me, Fred.
Bill, I'm sorry. If I may. I'm Bill Brennan, Township Solicitor.
Good evening, everyone. You know why we're here. It's a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance to change the zoning for a number of properties, including the former Meadowbrook Golf Club from R2 to PFC. This is a public hearing pursuant to public notice. The law, particularly Section 107 of the Municipality's Planning Code, says a public hearing is a formal meeting held pursuant to public notice by the governing body intended to inform and obtain public comment prior to taking action. So, it's not a judicial proceeding, as you've been told. There's no cross-examination. There are not two sides. The purpose is to provide information and answer any questions that have to do with a piece of legislation which is before the board for its consideration. I ask for your stability. We ask that you not repeat same points over and over, and it's my function to try to make sure that this is an orderly proceeding. So, with that, we will -- we need to swear you win. Now, rather than have each person who's going to talk be sworn separately, it would take too long. I would ask each person who intends to speak to stand and raise your right hand, please. You persons, each individually, swear that the statement or testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. All right. Thank you very much. And with that, Fred, we're -- the public hearing is open, and we ask those who wish to speak, come to the podium, identify yourself, tell us where you live. And one other point, as Fred indicated, listen to your comment. If you have questions, the questions will be noted. They will be answered at the end, all together, by the school district representatives who are here. Okay? So, have at it.
I can say one thing I'm not supposed to speak yet, but before it gets all hot and heavy in here, we as a community would like to thank the board for taking action on the fields at Charters Pond and having them moved and taken care of. We certainly do appreciate it.
You're welcome. First up.
Good evening. My name is John Maraz. I'm a lifelong resident of the Eastville area, including 25 years within Schuylkill Township. I have seen the growth of this area and know some of the major issues that the township and the school have had in the past. Tonight, the board is considering for adoption new ordinance to amend the township zoning map, change several parcels to the PFC zone, and amending regulations related to the PFC. The legal notice is a paragraph that was advertised in the local papers, and it did state that interested parties could review the ordinance at the township building. But I believe that the changes and conclusions in the PFC zone must be addressed here tonight and told what those situations are to all the residents here. Not sure how the current ordinance came to be, but several items seem to be for just one location. Example, Section 6, Sections 370-132H, that permits, quote, "spectator stands for no more than 1,000 spectators." This included in a new subsection addressing accessory use related to educational facilities. Who had input into this new ordinance? I'm not sure. But it seems that the Phoenixville area school district had a major input. We heard a brief discussion at one of the township planning meetings, but very little in details. To understand the timeline for this ordinance would help many of the people that are here. Currently, the site is Zoned R2 and T3 Zone, and I believe it does permit it in elementary school to be constructed. If the township supervisors adopt this ordinance as is, we will see a huge negative impact change in the character of this township. Preliminary plans show an estimated $81 million project consisting of a school for over 1,000 students, 150 staff members, a sports complex of six fields, a concession stand that may be built for up to 2,000 square feet, including a press box, restrooms, and possibly a sound system. Other residents will address this negative impact about this mega campus. The school board reviewed over 95 sites to replace the East Pike Lane Elementary School, but they selected the Meadowbrook Golf Course as a site to make the school campus for thousands of children. Schuylkill Township will now have two elementary schools, whereas East Pike Lane will now have no schools. And all those students who have been bused will have to be bused to the Schuylkill Township. This negates the factor of having to bus 19 teens, as the school board has said they need for the construction of these fields. We could have hired high-priced lawyers, but us residents decided to do a grassroots level. We went out and secured over 50 township residents to sign a petition objecting to this ordinance, and the board should have those petitions in hand. We have gone to many school and township meetings once we have heard about these plans. At no time were the residents on Meadowbrook Lane were asked to have any input. Why is the township allowing the school to be driving force for these changes? The supervisors elected by the residents protect and serve the best interest of the township, and I don't see that this having a mega campus is the best interest for the township. Some individuals who are instrumental to making this a reality are not even residents of this school district, county, or state. The title search for the golf course still has not been completed due to some issues with the western boundaries of the site. An analysis is going on right now by the school attorneys to deal with this. How can these parcels be rezoned to PFC when the boundary is not even known? I reviewed the Schuylkill Township 2005 Comprehensive Plan, a plan that lists the number of individuals that still serve in the township in various capacities, and wanted to quote from Conclusions/Reconations pages on several items. One, this is from your 2005 comprehensive study, "Request for zoning changes should also be viewed through the T-zone lens. In order to avoid future transect violations like that which occurred with the Fernley Development was plopped down in the middle of a rural landscape, the township should encourage infill development and redevelopment in the T4 zone before converting the rural landscape to T1 and T2 to an appropriate change. Essentially, the T4 zone is the place where development or redevelopment would have the least damaging effect on this township. Second, if certain existing properties become non-conforming as a result of the information included in the land use element, landowners can apply for variances in order to create minimal development with minimal impact. Finally, overall, the township should continue with this comprehensive study. In essence, it is a new day for Schuylkill Township. If the T-zone concept had been adopted 35 years ago, we would not have the terrible sprawl that we have since 1970. However, it is not too late. It is time now to nurture a logical and orderly growth pattern without sacrificing the amenities and resources that attracted us to this Schuylkill Township. We believe that township supervisors have a fiduciary duty to oppose this ordinance as written and hold the school to the same stringent rules and regulations that the township holds to other citizens and businesses within the township." Thank you.
Donna Much, Meadowbrook Lane. I'd like to ask some basic questions regarding the need to rezone any property from R2 to PFC. With the exception of setback requirements, what are the differences, but more telling, what are the advantages to Schuylkill Township and the taxpayers to have properties Zoned PFC, and what are the disadvantages? Is it true that land zoned R2 has greater restrictions than a PFC, and that once a parcel or parcels have been designated PFC, the owner has greater latitude on how that land is utilized? In essence, will the township be relinquishing a level of control of what the owner is permitted to do now and in the future without the need of township oversight? Need I say, if the latter is the case, this Board of Supervisors is shirking the responsibilities that I expect of my elected officials. Lastly, I'd like to share a topic from a meeting last night at the School Board Building and Property Committee. One month ago, right here in this room, at a Schuylkill Township Board of Supervisors meeting, Phoenixville area school district presented the site plan for the Early Learning Center and Elementary School. During discussion, Mr. Fagley was asked if a public address system would be included in the concession stand around the baseball fields. Following a slight pause, his response was yes. Clarification of this response was given last night by stating he would not exclude the possibility of a PA system. We have two lessons to learn by this. Schuylkill Township has a small window of opportunity to amend the current noise ordinance and/or PFC regulations concerning noise, so because we need to protect the neighborhoods and sustain a level of accessibility that you would expect in your own homes. My recap is the advantages and disadvantages of a PFC, township control of land once they are rezoned PFC, and noise. Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Maraz, and I'm at 34 Meadowbrook Lane, and thank you very much for the opportunity to address you all this evening. My husband and I, as you've heard from him already, are opposed to the zoning change. I chose a different track. I have concerns if they're allowed to go to the PFC and they are allowed to have all these different accessories with the fields, not to mention the number of fields, the noise impact on the neighborhood, and not to mention that we think that six fields is too many, but as I understand, that's an argument for another meeting. Another issue we had in terms of environmental impact was the loss of the trees. At the environmental meeting, the tree expert hired by the school district said that there were about 420 trees on the property, of which 300 would be eliminated. That's a 71 percent cut ratio. During that same meeting, the discussion that came about for the apartment complex on the Nolan property, where they were given a waiver for a sidewalk because the township didn't want to lose the trees. Another issue we had was wildlife, and contrary to the Phoenixville area school district environmental report, I've lived on Meadowbrook for the better part of 30 years, and I am witness to the myriad bird species in the trees and bushes, not to mention the little brown critters, of course, and the destruction of the trees and grounds destroy their habitat and their ability to survive. I believe it's the responsibility of all of you to see to it that the Phoenixville area school district is reined in on their mega campus that they want to put out there for us and become proper stewards of the land and demonstrate a more responsible approach to environmental issues. The solution is less playing fields equals less noise equals less trees destroyed equals less destruction of habitat and less loss of wildlife. Thank you very much.
My name is Bernadine Clayton. I resided at Meadowbrook Lane, and I feel the need to address you tonight as my letters have not been acknowledged, and this is an issue that is much too important to me, my son, my neighbors, and friends in the community. My husband and I purchased our home on Meadowbrook Lane in October of 1994, 20 years ago. We enjoyed the quiet surroundings. In fact, its location was the primary reason for purchasing our home. In the subsequent 20 years, Schuylkill Township and the surrounding area have witnessed a major escalation in development, with farmland and open space converted to numerous residential developments. I understand suburban development and some growth is inevitable, but when is enough enough? Whatever happened to open space? Schuylkill Township residents have been paying higher taxes for the very purpose for years now, that the township would even consider converting more parcels to public facility zones as shameful. Yet here we are, faced with the school district's plans for an early learning center. As I stated in previous correspondence, we recognize and accept the need for new school building. However, the proposed plans go far beyond that. In fact, they seem to have taken a life on of their own. The school itself is being overshadowed by an athletic facility, a facility of the scope and size presented in the proposed plans is just not warranted, and the former Meadowbrook Golf Club property is certainly not the location for a sports complex. Turning the quiet nature of a golf course into a busy, loud sports arena, complete with spectator stands, a PA system, a 2,000-square-foot concession stand, press box, restrooms, resulting in the loss of hundreds of trees, will drastically alter the landscape of the neighborhood and is contrary to the township codes and zoning provisions that were put in place to safeguard the community from overdevelopment, as my neighbor, John Maraz, discussed. The school should be built within the existing landscape rather than destroy it. We should be responsible stewards of the environment. A new education center with a playground and a couple of playing fields would be appropriate and sufficient, as well as in keeping with the school district's original objective and argument for taking this property by eminent domain, the need for a school, not a sports complex, much more than what is necessary and at an additional cost to taxpayers. As previously communicated, we strongly object to the rezoning of this property from R2, which accommodates a new school, to a public facility zone. It should remain as R2 with variances, exceptions applied for as necessary. And I suppose I am naive because I have been surprised, if not stunned, by the lack of responsiveness and consideration given the residence by representatives of the school district and elected township officials, in particular those residents of Meadowbrook Lane. I can confidently speak for many here tonight that we feel our very legitimate concerns have been ignored or dismissed as insignificant. Regrettably, with the absence of collaboration, those feelings have turned to one of resentment. So, I sincerely hope that tonight our voices will be heard with an open and impartial minds, attitudes will change, and common sense and fairness will prevail. The following statement, taken directly from the Schuylkill Township Comprehensive Plan Addendum of 2005 for Land Use, should not be ignored. It is time now to nurture a logical and orderly growth pattern without sacrificing the amenities and resources that attracted us to Schuylkill Township in the first place. Thank you.
My name is John D. Giuseppe. I live on 301 Pot House Road. I'm opposed to the ordinance specifically because it allows for an athletic complex consisting of six ball fields, seating for up to 1,000 spectators, and a concession building. The purpose of zoning an area as R2 is to create a smooth transition between low and medium density areas. The golf course is surrounded on three sides by single homes on half-acre and acre lots. A golf course -- the golf course was Zoned R2 along with the single homes in order to keep the area uniform and to keep the area from any major non-residential developments. This ordinance totally ignores the fact that there are some 300 single homes surrounding this golf course, which would be severely impacted by a subdivision, which would not only include over 12,000 students, 120-plus personnel, but an additional 100-plus students from the senior and junior high or middle school playing on the six athletic fields and an additional 1,000 spectators. This is not a smooth transition and certainly ignores the single home community that surrounds the subdivision. A reasonably smooth transition that is consistent with R2 zoning would be to limit the subdivision to the elementary school, the learning center, the playground, and possibly the proposed tennis course in place of the maintenance building. To add six fields together with all that it entails creates a dual subdivision of schools and athletic center, which overshadows the quiet residential nature of the area and literally swallows up the R2 district. Let's keep the subdivision what it was, or it meant to be, a replacement for East Pike Lane Elementary School and the kindergarten center. Let's not crowd the site with fields for the senior high and middle school and in so doing destroy the nature and purpose of the R2 district. Instead of making a smooth and harmonious transition, the ordinance will allow one subdivision to totally swallow up what's left of the R2 district. This is not the purpose of district zoning. Furthermore, these six fields were added to cut down on busing students to other sports facilities. That should not be the concern of the township. The primary concern of the township is to protect the nature and uniformity of its zoning and make certain that no one subdivision, for whatever reason, destroys the nature and harmony of the surrounding area.
My name's Larry Nye. I live at 12 Meadowbrook Lane for 40 years. When I moved there, I was the only family that was raising children. Everyone else was retired, so I was really the new kid on the block. And I don't have the fine points like my neighbors do here that they did their homework, and I just want to speak on my own experience. I mean, I played sports till I was 40 years old. I went to all the games in Phoenixville and that. The only thing I'm really concerned about is this overcrowding because I'm retired, and 10 to 2 is about the best time to get out on Pot House Road. After that, when 4 o'clock comes, you can forget it because everything is just congested, you know? Now, what's going to happen when all these ball fields and everything? Like, I counted it one day, 26 buses going up to school. They leave -- what time they leave? About 2:30 out of school? Okay. But I just think it's going to be a little too much, you know? But I just think it's going to be a little too much, you know, with all these fields and concession stands. That's what I think my neighbors are concerned about, too, about the noise and over, just overbuilding too much. I can see the school, they need the school, that's all well and good, but I think you should take into more consideration for everyone else in Schuylkill Township here, we do pay the taxes to keep this place afloat. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, Nancy Lapella, forty-two Meadowbrook Lane. And once again, with my neighbors, you can see they did a fantastic job of doing their homework to present what our concerns are. We've lived here fourteen years. My husband, who was born and raised in Phoenixville, we love it here, actually came from a more civilized environment just to live on a private lane like Meadowbrook Lane. We understand progress, we understand schools, we have children and grandchildren, so that's really, the point is just to think of us in your plans as far as maybe giving us some protection from noise and lights and fields and things like that. We've got a beautiful tree line, a couple of us are, some we consider ourselves environmentalists because we appreciate the wildlife we get, that's one of the reasons we live there. So it's sort of a plea, just, you know, from us on the lane, to give us a thought for the reason we all live here, and we want to, certainly want to spend the rest of our lives here. And although we welcome progress, we would really like consideration to just please give us some trees, some protection, and consider the environment when this plan goes through. Thank you.
There's somebody way in the back that said they wanted to speak?
Did they sign in?
Yes. Pete?
Peter Curry, President of Pickering Farms. Bill, are you familiar, I guess you're familiar with the zoning subdivision and land development?
I don't have it memorized, Pete, but I know it exists.
Okay, all right. I just want to read a couple sentences for you. The municipality's planning code contains several provisions protective of commercial agricultural uses. Section six oh three B expressly recognizes the preemption of municipal regulation of agriculture by the Nutrient Management Act, Agricultural Area Security Law, the Right to Farm Law, and other state and federal laws. Section six oh three H further provides that zoning ordinance may not restrict agricultural operations or changes to or expressions of agriculture operations in geographic areas where agriculture has traditionally been present unless the agricultural operation will have a direct adverse effect on the public health and safety. Section six oh three H also, again, prohibits zoning regulation otherwise preempted by state and federal law. In addition, in two thousand and five, Pennsylvania enacted the Agricultural Communities and Rural Environmental Initiative, ACRE, amending Title III Agriculture. ACRE prohibits municipalities from adopting unauthorized local ordinance defined to include an ordinance that prohibits or limits a normal agricultural operation. Okay? And what you would do with this ordinance if you, if they get it, is you would put, I guess, the two farms in that category, which would open them up to possibly building on those properties. I don't know if you're aware of that or not, and I may be, I'm just reading what it says here, and I understand it, okay? And also, section four oh one D, dot fifteen, comma, five eighteen F, and five twenty, removal of existing trees shall be kept to a minimum and shall conform to the requirements of these sections. Now, I understand there's going to be three hundred trees, and we look at the historical value, right Barbara? I mean, you're all about historical value. Three hundred large oak trees are going to come down because of this development. If they can minimize that, instead of the six, you know, six fields, make it four, I mean, that would be helpful. But also, I want to point out that Mr. Sartor advised that the plans show a significant number of noteworthy trees and tree masses to be removed. Mr. Sartor strongly recommended that the builder revise plans to preserve more existing trees, specifically on lots ten through fifteen, lots nineteen, twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-six, forty, forty-one, forty-four, forty, fifty-two, fifty-four, fifty-six. That's a lot of lots, okay? And he recommended that the existing layer, brush layer, also be preserved regardless of invasive species designation. So, your own engineer has stated that taking down a lot of trees would significantly affect the community. That's what we're telling you, is that by doing this and enacting this ordinance, you're going to, you know, affect our community. So, I ask you, as part of the big association, forty-eight homes that are directly affected from across the street, to reject this ordinance.
Thank you.
I'm Belinda Lindsay from East Pike Glen. And in going over with what everyone else has said, my concern is-
Can you speak a little louder?
Okay. My, and one of the concerns is removing our East Pike Glen school to transport the children to the Schuylkill, the new residents for the new school. Right now, our children are in a very healthy and safe environment. And testing has been done on the property that we have been told, and chemicals have been discovered. One of them was arsenic, which is a metallic element that is used in insecticides and killing weeds. This property has been existent as a golf course for over eighty years. So since nineteen thirty-two, chemicals have been dumped on this fifty-eight acres. Now, in order to do zoning, which you want to do, that means development of this ground, that means layers and layers and layers of chemical have seeped through down in this ground. Once you start developing the surfaces, and we also have runoff. Now, we're going to put all these children in this environment, seven days a week, on this property. Is it safe for our children? Before we do zoning, I think we need to find out if this property, the ground's stability, is safe for this enactment of the new school. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Dan DeVorat, Virginia Avenue. I would just like to say, I think if you go through with this ordinance change, you're making a big mistake. The creek on the golf course leads to a drinking water supply to the Pickering Creek, number one. If anything does surface, as, I'm sorry, as she spoke to previously, I also think that, Mr. Perry, I know you were a school board member, Barbara, I'm not sure if you were.
No.
I think you should recuse yourself from this ordinance change. I think it's a conflict of interest. So I hope you take that into consideration, you know, when you, you know, you make your decision. Also, to put it in perspective, Citizens Bank Park and Lincoln Financial Field are built on twenty-one acres each. So I'm trying to give you a picture of what those complexes are built on and what the school district is taking by obtaining Meadowbrook Golf Course. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this subject? Okay, Bill?
My name is Reema Minut. I live in, on South Brook Lane, right opposite. And I have one comment to make. I have two kids who go to this school. It's a lovely school, but when we send our children to school, we also expect the environment around them to be preserved and them to be taught, to keep the heritage of a township. So please, could we have the, you know, the trees, the animals, the lovely red foxes that run across the street, the deer, the birds, to be preserved for our children and our future generations? Number two, I love having a idea of having a school there. If we need a school, we definitely need it, but we do not send our children there to become baseball champions, football champions, or anything else. Number three, I want to bring this point. We've paid as taxpayers for Schuylkill, for the middle school and for the high school from Schuylkill Township. Now, East Pike Glen is putting that burden of their tax on us again. We, as citizens in this place, in this township, expect you, members of our council, to serve us and for our rights. We really, really want to, to do something for us as people in this township. Please do not pass this ordinance. It does not work for us. Thank you.
One of the questions I have is whether or not this is spot zoning, which I assume is illegal.
You sent two emails and-
You have checked it with the attorneys? And the other thing is that the general feeling here is by using the ordinance in order to bypass normal channels, the people in this room feel that the school district is embedded with the township supervisors. And I think you should know this, because that is a feeling, whether it is true or not, because this was all done on the quiet. We didn't know anything like this was going, I was totally shocked that you were doing an ordinance to rezone, which is unheard of. If I, as a developer, wanted to develop a piece of ground in Schuylkill Township, I doubt very highly whether you would pass an ordinance to give me the zoning I wanted. I had to comment on that, we've done just that. You did? Yep. We've done just that. Yeah, but how restrictive were you? Very. The other question I have is if you allow seating for a thousand students, I mean, a thousand spectators, your parking ordinance is three, three seating for every, one car parking for every three seating, which would be three hundred plus, three hundred and thirty-three cars. There's only going to be two hundred and fifty parking spaces. That's going to accommodate a hundred and twenty's personnel. So you don't even have enough parking spaces for some of the ordinance changes that you're making. And the other concern is that the parking spaces must be on the site according to your own code. They cannot be off-site. So if the school district is trying to use parking spaces that are available on the high school side, it would be against the code. These are things that you have to keep in consideration. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. We promised at the beginning that the school district members would be here to answer questions and respond to the comments. Attorney Mr. Bellwar is here, so I will turn the floor over to Mr. Bellwar to respond to these issues, and as, you're permitted to make your own statements as well.
Good evening. Andrew Bellwar, Special Counsel to the School District. The district requested these amendments, in part, to facilitate the building of a needed early learning center, and in part, because it makes sense. One of the listed purposes for the zoning ordinance is to promote, protect, and facilitate several uses, and your zoning ordinance specifies schools and recreational facilities. That's section three seventy dash two. Since the use is contemplated, the question arises, into which zone do you place these types of uses? The answer, I think, is very clear, that it's a public facilities zone. The Meadowbrook property is being designed for educational uses, and therefore appropriately belongs within the PFC district. It is a public facility. The purpose of the public facility zone, according to the zoning ordinance, is to provide for institutional and public-oriented uses, and to encourage, among other things, recreation. Despite now being in the R2 district, the property has not had any sort of residential use for an extended period of time. The amendments that are proposed before you address several parcels, several owned by the school district, several owned by the township. There was a process that was undertaken in regard to this zoning amendment. It has been analyzed, scrutinized, and revised. The township staff and township engineers have reviewed it and included some of the township's own wants and needs within this proposed ordinance. The process has taken several months, during which proposed ordinance was discussed and critiqued at public meters, public meetings of this board, where it was interviewed, public meetings of the Township Planning Commission, public meetings of the Regional Planning Commission. Pennsylvania law requires that any amendment like this is given over to the planning commissions so they can review it. Why? Because the planning commissions have the expertise and the experience to go through an ordinance like this, line by line, and figure out if it makes sense. So what happened in this case? Three different bodies have reviewed this ordinance, they've analyzed it, and they have asked that this board approve the recommended changes. That would be the Township Planning Commission, the Regional Planning Commission, and the County Planning Commission. As noted in the County Planning Commission Review Letter, this is the October first, two thousand and fourteen, letter. The area is designated medium-density residential on the feature land use map of the Phoenixville Regional Comprehensive Plan, this is your comprehensive plan. It is also within the designated growth area. The map and text amendments are consistent with, again, are consistent with, the types of uses recommended for the medium-density residential and growth areas. This is part of the body of advice you receive from those entities who are charged with giving you advice, telling you this is consistent with, and you should pass this ordinance. While I have the county review letter in front of me, I just want to go over to the second page in that letter, because it raises some of the questions that have been raised here tonight. In paragraph five of that letter, the County Planning Commission notes that, as indicated in the third section of the proposed amendment, at the double asterix section, there's permission to reduce the yards to as little as five feet from the property lines and ultimate right-of-way. Has to be noted that that section, it's really a subsection, is for a very limited purpose, and that's for things like fences and walking trails. It is not for buildings. In the PFC zone, side yard setback for buildings is fifty feet. One of the questions raised tonight was, is it more permissive or less permissive than what exists now, the R2 zoning? By way of example, in the R2 zoning district, the side yard setback is only fifteen feet. So by putting our property, the school district property, into the PFC zoning district, you're increasing the required side yard district. The, and by the way, the allowance of trails and fences within the side yard setbacks is consistent with the approach the township has taken previously with other developments and amenities for those developments. The second thing that exists there in paragraph five of the planning commission letter, they note the potential for noise issues, with active recreation taking place five feet from the right-of-way of Meadowbrook Lane, and they recommend that we incorporate measures to reduce noise along the west side of the property. So I'd ask if you would please to bring up the diagram that shows the west side of the property, because the argument, while that's being brought up, the argument has been raised that the six fields are within feet of the houses, the front doors of the houses, of some of the folks along Meadowbrook Lane. And I just want to spell out exactly what will happen.
I got great eyes, but I can't see.
Yeah, yeah. Chris, could you-
Thank you, Kevin. I couldn't see either.
I can see a lot of things, but I can't see that.
I'll take it through when it shows.
Sure, thank you.
This is looking up Meadowbrook Lane, and the bottom of the page would be Pot House Road. The heavy dotted line is the extent of ownership of property by the school district.
You want to point to that?
Sure.
Is that the middle of the road?
Middle of the road. That is correct. On the left are the houses of several of the folks who spoke here on Meadowbrook Lane. On the left are the houses of several of the folks who spoke here on Meadowbrook Lane. There's a requirement within their development plan that those houses be set back 50 feet from the edge of the right-of-way. There's a 60-foot right-of-way. And Chris, if you designate for the crowd, indicate where that right-of-way. That's the beginning of it. And go over to the other side. All right. So that's 60 foot wide. That's the right-of-way. Show them real quick, if you will, the smaller dotted lines that show the actual paved roads. Sure. These two lines here. So you see how the property line actually goes up the middle of Meadowbrook Lane? So what we have, when we talk in terms of how close are the fields to the residence, come out their front door, they're 50 feet before you come to the right-of-way. There's then 60 feet of right-of-way. And then what we did was go ahead and measure from the edge closest to our side of the right-of-way. So that's 110 feet from anybody's front door. Measure from there to the closest field of this proposed plan. And what we have is the first field down low. And Chris, what's that measurement from the edge of the right-of-way to the closest point on that field? That's 52 feet.
How much? I couldn't...
52 feet.
And that's a baseball field?
That's correct.
Well, the closest portion to the, even to the concession stand is 1,144 feet.
That's right. That's right. It's quite a distance. But I just want to respond to the idea that these ball fields are right outside their front door. They're not. It's 110 feet. And then there's an additional section of some 50-plus feet here.
Sarah, just a moment. Let him talk, please.
One at a time.
Hold on, one at a time.
One at a time, please. It's not everybody speaking at the same time.
All right. The next slide shows the next ball field going up Meadowbrook Lane. And from the right-of-way line, Chris, how far is it to the edge? That's 64 feet. So it's 110 plus 64, which gets you close to 175.
Bigger than a football field.
Well, it's feet, not yards.
60 yards. 60 yards, right.
Right. And then this is a field that also has a baseball, smaller baseball type of this field. So that baseball field is set much further back. All right. If you go up Meadowbrook Lane with the next one, this is where the road starts to curve a bit. And if you look at the closest point of a field to the far edge of the right-of-way line, again, 110 feet, what's the distance there? That's 29 feet, approximately where there's an existing tee box at the golf course. And then as the crow flies from that corner to that house, because that house is not quite opposite the edge of the field there, but as the crow flies, that's about 200 feet? 150, 200, in that range? All right. So this shows that indeed we will not be right outside the door of anybody's house. But the question arises, what will be in the zone between the edge of the right-of-way and the start of the ball fields? And to answer that, what I want to do is look more generally at the design that we've laid out here. So if you go with the, show us the general design. Because the district has designed these plans in such a way to minimize the effect on the neighboring properties. The district is routing bus traffic through its existing middle school bus loop up top. There will be no buses entering or exiting from Pot House Road or from Meadowbrook Lane for that point. The school district set back the school to the extreme rear of the property in order to get it away from the residences. Certainly, the school district could have looked to put that school building right close to Meadowbrook Lane, but they tried to move back as far away as we could from the residences. The school district has designed the building in a way that will match the visual character and aesthetic of the community. And we can show you slides as to what the school will look like. The school district is maintaining extensive areas of open space. To the east, almost a third of that property will remain open space. Now, we can, but we're not going to. The school district is respecting the stream corridor as well as the historic resources that exist on the southeast corner of this property. The school district is also incorporating landscaping and screening in excess of what the township ordinance is required, specifically to address some of the issues raised by the neighbors. And along Meadowbrook Lane, going back to that area between the edge of the right-of-way and the beginning of the ball fields, we are maintaining all of the sycamore trees. We are then additionally putting in plantings in order to present a visual and noise screening so that those are reduced significantly for the neighbors there. The district has made changes. The district has made changes to its plans. It has moved a building back away from some of the folks on the bottom right-hand side. And they're taking extra effort in order to put in additional landscaping along Meadowbrook Lane.
Could you address the questions raised regarding tree removal? Because there seems to be some disparity in numbers here.
Sure. And I think the best way to address that, as well as the noise, is to state upfront, this ordinance does not touch any of that. This does not affect it. It doesn't reference it. It doesn't change it. It is what, whatever you have, we have to comply with. And that goes a little more comprehensively to, are we changing the game here? Are we not going through certain procedures? No. We do have to go through all the land development as references by Supervisor Morrison. We have to go through. We've started that process. We're going to go through that process. It will be an involved process. It has to date and it will continue to be. But we have to meet the subdivision land development ordinance. We have to meet the requirements of PennDOT. Remember, these are state roads, Pot House and 29, that the property borders on. So they have their own requirements. We have a traffic impact study. We have to meet the requirements that PennDOT imposes on us, and we will do that. One key to discuss very quickly now, it's really a land development item, but I just want the folks to know that at the intersection of Pot House and 29, it's a difficult intersection now. We've had lengthy discussions with PennDOT. The district is going to put a lot of money into that intersection to make it much better, according to PennDOT.
Just a minute, ma'am.
So the district...
You'll have your chance to talk if you want to.
So the district has been open to feedback from the citizens, has been forthright about this development plan in that we've had it posted at the school district and on the website for months and months and months. One of the issues raised was whether we really need all these playing fields. And I just want to talk about that for a second. Because it was an issue that was also raised in the context of the hearings conducted down Westchester in the Court of Common Pleas before Judge Cody. Some of the people protesting against the condemnation claim, we don't need all of this land. So one of the things we did was present testimony to the judge. That's exactly what we need and why we need it. The judge in part based her decision upon the plan that we presented to her. And that plan contained all six playing fields. So for us to go and revise it now would go against the plan that we presented to the judge in order to confirm that the condemnation was... The district has held meetings with the neighbors. We've asked for their feedback. I know somebody said, I didn't get a chance to say anything. Well, Mr. Johnson's been at those meetings and he can tell you that the neighbors did indeed have an opportunity to provide feedback to them.
Please. Please, you'll get, you'll get your chance in court.
And I have a lot of people asking the question.
Let's be civil.
Right. And the question is, is East Pikeville no longer going to have a school? Or they're still going to have a school?
I'm going to let Stan Johnson, he's the Executive Director of Operations for the school district, I'm going to let him address that.
Okay.
Hang on for a minute. I'd like a raise of, raise of hands and two questions. How many people went to the East Pikeville Board and made reservations for them to pass so the school district could expand the facilities out there? How many were at that board meeting? One. One! And now all of a su... Hang on. Hang on. And how many were so interested, that visited the school district to their meetings, hang on, just a minute, about when they were thinking of expanding and say, taking over the golf course? How many people? Sit down, please. I just asked for hand, I just asked for hands. How many visited the school district in the meeting? Hang on. Hang on. I just, bringing up some issues, okay? You have your chance to talk later. All of you like to talk, but you don't like to listen. Let's listen a little bit. You listen to your people. Let's listen to these people. Please. You give me all the eye looks and all the eye drops and all the faces, but let's be fair where fair is fair and be civil to each other. Thank you.
All right. So I think a question would be addressed by Mr. Johnson.
The question was asked is, will there be a school in East Pikeville when this project is completed? And the answer is no, not in the short term. The intent is that when this building opens in 2017, this building, based on our current enrollment projections, should handle the projected growth in this area for about five years. After that, sometime in the early decade of the 2020s, 2022, 2023, the projections are the district will likely need another elementary school and the district is currently looking at sites in East Pikeville. I do want to mention, it's not without effort that the district tried to place not one, but two schools in East Pikeville. And unfortunately, we're not successful for a variety of reasons. So the answer to the question is, in the short term, no. We will not have a school in East Pikeville. But in the long term, we certainly anticipate having a school in East Pikeville sometime in the middle of the next decade.
So what you're telling me is all of first and fifth grade through East Pikeville is going to be a school of township? And from what I heard was kindergarten center and only first grade was going to be part of that building. And East Pikeville School was going to stay there second through fifth?
No. No. The plan is that when this building gets finished, all of the kindergarten and first graders in the district will attend the right-hand side of that school. The left-hand side of that school will be grades two to five in reconfigured attendance zone, which will include all of East Pikeville, plus also some of the children who currently attend Barclay and Schuylkill because those two schools are bursting at the seams. We have to do some redistricting. So children from Schuylkill Township will be attending this building. K1.
Who makes that call?
Excuse me?
Who makes that call?
There will be redistricting done by the district and we'll do that effective in 2017.
I'm not really a fan of that. From my understanding, it's no offense, it's Schuylkill Township takes a big, large burden of the taxpayers' dollars that funds Phoenixville Area School District and East Pikeville. And, and I really don't want, I mean, my children are over the age of first and second grade, but I still have children who's second, who's in fifth grade, who's in sixth grade. But honestly, I'd like my kids to go to Schuylkill Elementary because that's where my tax dollars go.
My tax dollars go for all over.
But it, but we fund a big portion of Phoenixville Area School District. The tax dollars ourselves, or the residents of this township, fund a big portion of, we maintain Phoenixville and East Pikeville.
Excuse me, do the residents of East Pikeville pay taxes for the school district?
Yes.
The residents of all three municipalities...
Exactly. I think we need to understand, it's not just Schuylkill paying. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's correct.
Everybody's paying the fair amount.
Everybody, everyone that goes to these schools pays the property tax. That pays the school district.
Everyone pays the levelized mill.
Between Phoenixville, East Pikeville, and Schuylkill.
So everybody is paying, period.
Yes.
No matter where a school is located, everybody's...
How many residents of East Pikeville?
That's not the issue. We're all paying this, we're all paying our equivalent taxes.
9,000 residents that live in East Pikeville Township.
That's correct. Let, let Mr...
No, I understand. I understand what you're saying.
Okay. Another question that was raised was the issue of arsenic and contamination on the, on the ground. I need to state very clearly, the district is very much aware of that. We had a Phase 1 environmental study done of the property. The Phase 1 study was then followed by a Phase 2 study. What both of those studies found was there was limited arsenic contamination on the putting greens and on some of the boxes, the dry boxes. That sampling was replicated last week. We're currently evaluating the results of that. The Phase 1 and the Phase 2 study both said that that contaminated soil is very easily mitigated. There's a number of techniques as to how that can be taken care of. The use of arsenic on golf courses is very common. It's used for years and years as a way to preserve the unique grass that's kept on putting greens.
The study back in 2009 said it was elevated, not limited. Thank you.
We have hired Environmental Standards, a local environmental company up on Valley Forge Road. They are currently doing the studies and doing the analysis. And we believe they will come with a set of recommendations to the Board of School Directors on November 17th and we will deal with that issue. Again, the issue of taxes that was raised is the how come Schuylkill Township has to pay for all of it? The fact is, we levy the same millage rate to every property owner, residential or commercial, in East Pikeville, in Phoenixville Borough, and in Schuylkill Township. All play the same based on whatever your assessed value is of your property. Other questions?
I have a question. Did you ever do a study, who pays the most taxes, East Pikeville, the Borough, or Schuylkill Township? Who paying the most?
Well, unfortunately, the municipality that pays the most based on the appraised value is Phoenixville Borough because they have the most parcels. They have the most homes. And each home is appraised or assessed at a certain value. So in our district, Phoenixville Borough is the largest contributor to the property taxes and then is followed close behind by Schuylkill and then by East Pikeville. So?
Hang on, hang on. Just a minute, just a minute, folks. You'll get your chance. Hang on. Any other questions to Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I have two questions for him. And he's avoided these questions before and I've asked him many times. They're trying to say Meadowbrook Lane is, they, they own half of Meadowbrook Lane. And the citizens of that road that live, the people living in the houses have paid maintenance on that road for years. And they're now trying to say they own half of it? They've never, to my knowledge, they've never paid any money for the maintenance of that road. So how can they say they own it now? And he also mentioned the fact that, excuse me, that Pot House Road, that they're going to make the buses go around, you know, to where the middle school is. And they've all also stated that there's going to be an additional 1,200 students going to this new school. And approximately 300 to 400 of those parents are going to drive those kids to the school in their cars. So that's an additional 300 or 400 cars on, you know, Pot House Road each and every day. And the other thing I would say is like, the amount of money they're spending on this school is coming out of my pocket. And I don't even have any children to go to, go to school at all. And, you know, for, to spend $80 million on a school for K through 5 and the two people, Mr. Johnson and Dr. Fagley, don't even pay taxes in the community because they don't even live here. So they're the ones that are... They're the puppet masters behind everything and we're going to pay for it. And it's for them. They're going to send another raid. Yeah, exactly. So if you can address those questions, I'd be, I'd be happy to hear them because I've proposed those in the school board meetings and they said, we don't answer questions in school board meetings. And then I get, you know, emails from them two months later after I ask the questions and they just don't respond to them. You know, and the responses, at the end of the day, are, are not, are not good. So, here you go.
Hang on, hang on. Anybody, anybody else? I would ask you, if you had a company, you owned a company.
Yes.
And you had to hire the president of the company or the vice... And you had to hire the president of the company or the vice president of finance, the financial officer, and would you entertain resumes from outside of the city?
I would want somebody that had it, it's.
You can't, you, you want to hire the best of the best for who's running your organization, is that correct?
Who said, who said we did that?
Is that correct?
Well, who said we did that?
Well, if that's the case, then.
I'm not, I'm not.
Well, that, that answers your, that answers your question of Mr. Johnson and Mr. Fagley.
Firstly, I don't think we did that.
Yes, you did. I'm, I'm not.
We did, you, you say we did, I don't think we did.
Is the, is the roads, is the roads, is the roads in Meadow Brook Lane you're saying part of the school district once you get the land?
Hang on.
Is that what the answer?
Would you like Mr. Gould, who's the school board president, to address?
Sure.
Fred, can I back up just? We're devolving into chaos here, which happens. Is the school district finished with its statement? Because I think to be orderly, you should make your remarks, and then
Look and raise their hands.
We will identify questions that I'm sure you'll be happy to answer.
Yeah, I have a few extra that I think will address some of the questions.
Why don't you finish your remarks, and then we'll have questions, is that alright?
How about the specific questions that gentlemen just asked, okay?
Alright, go ahead.
Okay. The question was, have we contributed to the maintenance of Meadow Brook Lane? And the answer is no, because we just took possession a couple of months ago.
Six weeks ago.
The question is.
That's the property one.
Suppose it's property.
If the previous property owners didn't contribute to that, to the lane, I can't.
I never owned it.
I can't control that. What we do know is, we have a title, and we have a deed, and the deed says that our property goes to the center point or center line approximately of Meadow Brook Lane. We had that property survey, and the survey shows the line exactly where Mr. Jensen displayed it on the screen. So yes, we own half of Meadow Brook Lane by the deed. Now, whether or not we contribute to the ongoing maintenance of Meadow Brook Lane in the future, give us a few months, let us work with the neighbors, and we will look at what needs to be done to do that. We may even offer to plow it. The other question that was asked.
Fred, we can't hear back here. We cannot hear back here. So either you got to talk up, or these guys got to do it again. And you know what, I think they should do it again, because they shouldn't do it until they make us happy.
Has the district finished their remarks? Is there anything else the district wishes to say in its remarks?
Yes.
Alright, please, let's finish up with that, then we'll have questions in an orderly fashion, please.
Alright, Mr. Maraz referenced a petition, and I've reviewed that petition. It talks about the eminent domain proceedings and makes a couple assertions that I just want to address, because I believe there's some factual errors within that. First, they state, any further development of this land by P A S D, i.e. six ball fields, goes beyond the intended use cited to justify the claim of eminent domain. And this goes to that idea that when we were before the judge for eminent domain, and even in the context of when the board initially declared for eminent domain, that the ball fields were all part of it. Secondly, he states, or the petition states, changing this historic property zoning to PFZ is a permanent action. Well, the, the zoning is not historic property zoning, but rather R2. Lastly, within that petition, he claims that the character and landscape of Schuylkill Township will be forever changed, and the proposed ordinance is not in keeping with the character of, and landscape of Schuylkill Township. But indeed, the County Planning Commission stated just the opposite, that it was consistent with. So you have a number of signatures on that petition, but heading up that petition are a number of facts that do not appear to be correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make one comment that is associated with his comments, which goes to spot zoning. I don't know whether you all have looked at our township zoning map recently or not, or at all, but we have sections of the township that are separated by, by different zones. For example, we've got a, we've got a commercial zone at the intersection of White Horse and, and 23. And then jumping way down to, to Charlestown Road and Pot House Road, we've got another commercial zone. But in between that is R2, FR, you know, the whole bit. So, so we, we historically, and this is not, not this board, okay, because this goes way back in time, have basically zoned where we perceive is the appropriate.
Yeah, I'm going to.
So, in this particular instance, for example, for the public facility zone, we are already, we're not really contiguous already. We're, we've got, we've got a, the New Valley Park Property Zone, Public Facility Zone. The current elementary school is zoned at, and now there's obviously a distance between those two. The YMCA is zoned as a public facility zone, that's across the street. Now that's, it could be argued, okay, that's sort of adjacent. And then we have a, another piece that's our Pickering Reserve, it's also a zone, PFC. So, it, it, it really goes to where the most appropriate use is for zoning in the township as determined by a whole bunch of people, okay, not just, not just two or three.
Let me conclude my remarks, I'm glad to answer any questions that we haven't answered so far. We're not a developer trying to squeeze another six houses out of a development order to make a bigger profit. This is for the kids. It's for a needed facility and field duly discussed and approved by the school board of directors. We ask you to take action tonight to approve the amendments, so the district can get on with the job of providing the required needed environment for the kids to learn and play. Right now, kids are being housed in 18 trailers each day. Even if the township were to approve a plan of development today, the built-in delay for building means an opening of 2017 school year. If there were delay tonight, the effect would be to push that opening date back, and the kids would remain in the trailers, learning each day, that much longer. Quick note about property values. What makes for increased property values? Certainly a fantastic school district. With the proposed early learning center and fields, we will have a safer, more efficient school district. This translates into excellence, and that increases the value of everybody's property. So the planning commissions have recommended that this board approve the proposed amendments. I ask you to do that tonight.
Thank you.
Hang on, I'm going to, I'm going to allow each of you to come up again and speak. So just hang on, please, you all get your chance again. First of all, we have one of my colleagues wants to say something.
I know many of you personally, we have lived in, in this area for 42 years while my husband was on the staff of Phoenixville Hospital. And I, I, in, in serving as a volunteer for over 20 years, helping Phoenixville and helping the community, I want you to understand that this is not a pernicious, avaricious developer who is looking to do something egregious with the golf course property, okay? The school district has behaved honorably throughout this process. The approved, the appraised value of this property was one number. The family wanted a huge number more, and the school district offered over the appraised value to try to make peace with the family and acquire this property in, in a way that was appropriate. They had to go through a torturous process and wait until the judgment was made by the courts in ordering the school district to be able to take ownership. I, I understand your concerns, and I understand the fact that you live close by, and we're listening to those concerns. But I'd like you to look at the big picture here, okay? The property in East Pikeville, five, six years ago, was deemed absolutely filthy. There was no way to build where they wanted to at that time. We all pay taxes throughout the whole school district. Three different municipalities based on the value of our homes and nothing else. That is what we do. There is no difference between Schuylkill, or East Pikeville, or Phoenixville, except whatever the appraised value of your home is. That's a fact. So let's get the facts straight and be fair. We're talking about kids having the opportunity to interact with each other. As a former teacher, I had 120 children today at the Schuylkill River Heritage Center, second graders, okay, learning about the community. It was beautiful. It would be wonderful if middle school kids could walk over to the early learning or second through fifth, I don't care which grade. Children in high school or middle school interacting with younger children is a marvelous kind of thing to have happen. They can be mentoring and tutoring and doing all kinds of positive activities. Saving gas in terms of having kids have to go other places in order to play again. Synthesizing activities, saving open space, and putting an educational campus in a centrally located position as, as being proposed is a positive thing. I represent our township on the Regional Planning Commission. Our consultant made recommendations to our group when we met at the end of October. We unanimously approved the recommendation that this should be allowed to go forward with the provision of the following. This was the suggestion, if I may read it to you, for the sake of the public record, okay? Improve the pedestrian and bicycle accessibility with the surrounding community. Strengthen the visual screening of neighboring residences. And I feel very strongly that you, your privacy and that screening should be protected. And I think they've addressed that as well. Enhance the stream corridor vegetative buffering. I agree with you with the environment. Investigate the water conservation and clean energy alternatives. Effect the necessary road and intersection improvements. Incorporate effective adaptive reuse strategies for historic resources, and they have come to our historic commission, and we're discussing various options. Our regional planning group approved the recommendation with one amendment. We recommended that not only that they approve the intersection at Pot House Road and Route 29, but also make improvement to the intersection at Charlestown Road and Route 29. And I've discussed that with Mr. Johnson.
I might add in conclusion of their report, they said that the proposed zoning map change and ordinance and amendments are viewed as consistent with the Phoenixville Regional Comprehensive Plan.
Exactly. So it's not just us, the five of us, making a decision. As has been stated to you, the appropriate planning commissions have reviewed this in great detail. Thank you for listening.
Alright, now I'm going to entertain the people again. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. One question I had was, the attorney said that the practice fields are for the kids. And Mr. Johnson says, whenever those fields aren't in use, they're going to rent them out to the public. So in the summer, in the summer, when baseball's in full bloom, that's going to be 24/7, and I don't care what anybody says. Bushes don't stop noise, alright, it doesn't. So our concern is obviously not the school. You've heard us all say we don't have an issue with the school. It's with the congestion and the noise that is going to come with the, I don't care what they say, squeezing in of those fields for every piece of land, when if it's for the kids, why would they need to rent it out and turn it into a moneymaker? And if they've got the time to rent it out, what do they need all six for?
Right.
Thank you.
Sir.
Comes back to talking about those of us attending school board meetings and listening to the preparatory stages of this development. I need to remind you that several of us have gone through the minutes for the past year, year and a half. And guess what? The discussion of some of this that we're talking about now, we're, they were in executive session, sir. We were not aware of many of the things that were taking place in terms of the planning phases and stages.
Excuse me, are you referring to the school district?
Yes. Terms of the school district as well, never had a child to, attending the school, don't have, never had a child, but I do have acquaintances and friends who are in the education business. This is not a school district that has the highest marks in the world. And it does not bring in and help the value of our properties when you're trying to bring someone into, to the community, and, and one of the, the bad factors is the school district. Lastly, I want to talk about the busing, 19 teams. Just, just in case those of us who haven't been around school for a while, we had a junior high team that was JV and varsity hockey, that's, that's, that's use hockey as an example. That was a team. Right now, Mr. Johnson, when he talks about his teams, he's separating out the seventh grade team, the eighth grade team, and the ninth grade team. So that, some of these numbers are a little exaggerated when it comes to, to busing 19 teams. Now then you look at the percentage of kids who actually are in athletics. I don't know what that number is, but guess what? 100%, 100% of the children who now attend East Pikeville School are going to be bused. And they're not going to be bused just for spring and fall outside activities. They're going to be bused every day they go to school. Double the distance from an athletic field.
My, my question is, is directed to the attorney here. Have you ever been to any of the football games at the Phoenixville High School? First of all, when you're getting so many feet from a home, you can't contain these people in a little square. You've got kids over here, you've got families over here, people walking around. They're everywhere, they're not just contained in this little field. And my uncle lives on, between Anderson and Garfield, and when they're playing a football game, he can hear that P A system all the way down on his front porch. And my parents live on Meadow Brook, and they're right there at the first tee, and you can hear every little instrument in their back door. So no, you have no way of controlling that noise factor. And as far as Barbara going to this center for these children all day, that's fine. But when you leave there, you go home to your mountain home, where it's nice and quiet, and there's nobody around. This is not fair to these people who have been there 42, 60 years with their homes in a private area that they loved and enjoyed. And they shouldn't be exposed to all this noise and traffic and ruin their privacy. That's not fair to them either. You need to be fair.
Barbara, with all due respect, and I know that, you know, you have a lot of years in this community. I know you have a lot of years in this community, but you have to, you know, look at the whole picture as well, okay? Tell me something, when we were discussing the schoolhouse that you cherished, that was here for many, many years, you were determined to make sure that that foundation stood and that building was still there, correct?
I tried very hard.
That's right, you did. And you see a lot of people here today? We've been here for a little while, not as long as you, but we're here today to tell you that we, we, we're that foundation, and we want to, we still want to live here. And you, you are going to actually allow the school district, and believe me, let's build a school for the kids, okay, that's great. But you don't need the ball fields, you can do without the 250 parking spots, okay? If you're really sincere about it, you can do, you can do this, but. If you're really sincere about it, you can do this, but you don't need all of those fields and you don't need all those parking spaces. So, you can make a decision, but you have to be fair as well. And fair to all these people that have lived here as well. And, you know, you talk about, you know, they talk about the values of the houses to go up, you know, that will go up. Well, what happens if our taxes go up, which they will? They started at 60 million, now it's $81 million to build this school and fields. How much, how much are you going to pay? How much more are you going to pay? Do you know? Do you know? You don't know. And we all don't know. You know why? Because they're not putting it in the paper. And you would have a lot more people that come to these meetings if they knew that this was going on. So, believe me, when this started, I found out through someone that went to school at the school, and not until August, not, you know, not when these gentlemen said that they started discussing it. And talk about public meetings? This is the first public meeting about this situation. And look at all the people that you have here. If you do it again, you're going to have double, I guarantee you. And that's what we're, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about an important decision that you're going to make. And you keep saying, you guys don't raise taxes. Well, you don't. These guys do, but guess what? Our taxes are going to go up.
The point is, Pete, I don't have any children in the school.
You didn't want.
Okay, let me finish. Please let me finish my sentence. And I'm trying to say this in a quiet, respectful, and civil way.
Right.
Okay? We're all citizens and residents of this community. And whether it's Phoenixville or East Pikeville or Skookel, we have a responsibility to give the children, no matter whose they are, the best kind of contextual environment that we can. We are not looking at a developer here who's going to make a profit on what is done. So, let's try to work together and make sure that the context of what the school district is trying to get done is done as they are trying to do in a responsible way.
And I agree with you, but nobody ever mentioned anything about profit. And we're not talking about profit. We're talking about people's communities.
But they're not your enemies, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, we're talking about people's communities that are affected. Okay, we're all affected. You have to, you have to, you know, you have to think about that.
You know, Peter, can I just make, can I just make one quick comment? And I know this is going to sound really bad, but you know, when your development was built, a lot of people said exactly the same thing.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I had to say that.
Okay, but guess what?
Everyone talked about the traffic, everyone talked about how, how this was going to add a lot to the township and the traffic was going to be a pain in the neck.
Forty-eight houses. Forty-eight houses, you're talking 250 spots. They're going to make profit by having people and teams come there over the weekend and playing tournaments.
I'm just saying, the same arguments were said about your development.
She was not sworn in.
Were you sworn in?
She was not sworn in.
Just a moment.
Go ahead.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear that the statement you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help your God? All right, proceed.
I'd like to respond to this comment. I live in Pickering Glen, Eva Lander, Pickering Glen. I live in Pickering Glen. You should not have, you should have denied the request to build those homes if that's just the way you feel about it.
We weren't on the board then.
We have heard that for 12 years. So, it's not fair to the residents of that community to treat us that way. If, if you didn't want us, then don't build it. You should have rejected the development.
With all due respect, all five of us, none of us was on the board when Pickering Glen was before the supervisors. Let me just finish my sentence, please, okay? None of the five of us were on the board when Pickering Glen was reviewed and approved. All five of us have come to the board after that occurrence. The facts, excuse me, but facts are what they are. So, don't address any of us in that way, okay?
I'm just making a statement. Take into consideration what's being taken tonight, is how people feel about the new school. Therefore, 20 years, 10 years from now, you're not throwing it back into their faces saying, "Well, we didn't really want those fields there." Do it now. Don't wait 10 years from now and then reject it.
Okay.
I was sworn in, I did raise my hand.
Thank you.
In case I wanted to speak, I was protecting myself.
We got to play by the rules.
My name's Janine Snadley. I live at 139 Trotters Drive. And I heard most of the noise issues being addressed by Meadow Brook. But if you show that picture again, I can show you that from where I live and you can see where the, my key gets it up, where the football field is. I hear the crowds and I hear the speaker and I hear the band, okay? And I hear all that. And so you can see where the football field is in the top right corner there. And I live in Pickering Glen. And you can see how far away that is. And you were saying, "Oh, it's 60 yards." But if we have a PA system there or lights and this whole public arena, it's going to be very difficult for us. And in the, what you said, Ms. Cohen, and you read all those statements in that review, not one of them addressed the noise. It did address the visual, which is wonderful, but I think it would be good if we did get the noise on there as one of the things that need to be mitigated. So, that's why I'm against this.
Sure. And I read, what we're making a decision on tonight is not the specifics of the development. We're only making a decision regarding the.
The buildings.
The property.
The public thing. Well, then you allow for these restrooms and these speakers and.
There's room further down the way to address the noise concerns.
But the zoning, the zoning change won't allow for that?
Pardon me?
Are you saying this new zoning change won't allow?
Has nothing to do with the noise.
With the loud, allowing louds?
Has nothing to do with it.
No, nothing to do with it.
Nothing to do with it.
So, that's all allowed anyway?
No. You're missing the point. What we're doing is just.
Getting the construction.
Getting the proper zoning in place. It is the first step.
Let her finish, please.
The other thing that we talked about, that I heard some other people talk about, were the sports teams and how many of the students actually use these, are sports people. And I know for the basketball team, for seventh grade basketball, my son is in seventh grade, I asked how many students are on the boys' basketball team and there's 11. I'm not sure how many seventh graders there are. So, that seems like a very small amount in my mind. And we're accommodating, you know, the sports people with these fields. So, I wanted to bring that up to you.
Understand the differential between what we're making a decision on tonight and the kinds of issues that you are addressing in a very civil and respectful way. And I appreciate your taking the time to come, we all do, to hear all this. But there is, but there's separate issues with regard to.
But it gets everyone one step closer, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but it seems like, you know, you give someone an inch, they take a mile.
But this is the school district.
I understand that.
And they have a responsibility to all of us.
I know, but I've been to the meetings, the neighbor meetings, as soon as I found out about them, and I've been to two of them. And I felt very shut down at those meetings.
Really?
And so a lot of the other people would be shut down with these answers. And the comment about the buses, you know, I said the same thing, there's going to be all these buses coming down. There already are a ton of buses that come down Pot House. And that's only going to increase. And they said that same line, all the buses have to enter by the middle school. It still doesn't, it doesn't mean they're not going to use Pot House and there's going to be more buses. So, a lot of things that we brought up, they don't agree with. They don't say, "Yeah, I know what you're saying." It's, they shut you down. It was, they haven't been very close, and I went to two.
All right, this isn't a dialogue between the two of you, just finish what you're going to say and then.
That's my comments.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question to ask of Stan here. Do you happen to know how many, what the capacity of the football field is in terms of attendees? I want to draw that comparison to what's being proposed. The seating capacity of Washington Field, the football stadium, I believe it's about 2,500 folks that sit in those stands. And then additional folk can stand around the, around the fence. But the seating capacity is 2,500.
So, if a thousand seats are provided for in this athletic complex and it's limited to that, that's half, less than half the noise level, roughly.
Well, what's the normal capacity for a primary?
Hang on. Go ahead.
Well, I just want to go back to that one comment, Jim. Who came up with a thousand spectator seats? Was that under negotiation with the school board and the township here? Where did that number come from?
I have no idea.
Can anybody answer that question?
It was in the ordinance.
It was the ordinance, but I don't think that was part of the original ordinance.
You can answer that question because there was originally a request to allow as an accessory use seating, which is allowed today. At some point I suggested that maybe it's a good idea to put a cap on it so you don't have somebody, and the school district is not going to do this on these fields, but so that somebody at another location doesn't come up with 2,000 seating capacity. So, together with the township engineer, drew the line at a thousand.
But isn't this location the only place in this township that will have spectator seats? What other location under the PFC zone will have 1,000 seats or could have 1,000 seats?
The Skookel Elementary.
1,000 seats?
They could.
They could. Do they have any ball fields here that could have 1,000 seats?
I'm sorry, what?
Do they have it, fields?
No, no, that wasn't the question you asked. You asked in the future, could it?
Right.
Well, it's zoned for that and that's what this is for.
But this was.
But so it could potentially sometime down the future have that.
Why not 500?
I don't know. It was the number, the number was drawn at 1,000.
So, this could be additional 1,000 people showing up at this location on the weekend or weeknight.
Yes.
This will put part of a township with public safety, with police protection, fire protection. You cannot get up Pot House Road with an ambulance, come rush hour. If you have an injury on that baseball field or whatever that field you're looking at, how is the ambulance going to get up there?
Well, actually, we can get up, we can get up that road.
That's right.
With lights and sirens, we can.
It's very touching, I know, but we did have.
We would get up there.
Not only do I have the deputy chief here at the car company, I also have the chief of police, and we can get up there when we need to.
And furthermore, to go to that, go to that question or that point, I understand the school district is now strongly considering a third lane between Trotters Drive and 29. Okay, so, so that will provide that level of access that might otherwise not be there.
Exactly.
Well, one other comment, I attended the school, I attended the school board meetings.
Calm down, folks, calm down.
Mr. Morrison, we couldn't hear you.
I said that we have heard from the school district, they're considering a third lane between Trotters Drive and Route 29 for turning purposes, basically, okay? To not create that unnecessary bottleneck at 29 and Pot House.
And Charlestown Road?
A comment that was made to me at a school board meeting, that once this gets rezoned, they can build whatever they want to build on this parcel. And this goes back to the comment the attorney mentioned earlier, that because of the eminent domain, those six fields were part of the takeover of the golf course. So, it sounds like whatever is requested, denied, or not allowed, what does the township do? They're saying they'll build these six fields, no matter what.
We're talking about not building issues, we're talking about other issues.
We're only talking about zoning at this point.
John, I would remind you that we have another process waiting in the wings here. On this whole, on this whole issue, it's called subdivision and land development, okay? And that is going to undergo another series of reviews by our Planning Commission, by the Chester County Planning Commission, by the Regional Planning Committee, you know, it's not over, okay? So, my advice to the attendees here would be keep an eye on the Planning Commission calendar because that's the first stop.
Well, we did that at the Planning Commission, I think last month, when this zoning request was made. At that time, there was very little discussion on this rezoning. It was passed to be voted on tonight to the board. Very little communication.
With all due respect, what we're trying to explain to you, and I do mean with respect, okay? We respect the fact that you're residents and that you have concerns. But a lot of the things that you're bringing up tonight are not part of what the decision making tonight is all about. And what Jim was explaining very carefully is that questions and concerns and issues that you have, there will be appropriate venues for bringing those things up.
But the R2 zoning does, the R2, tell me, doesn't the R2 zoning, which is right now, permit an elementary school?
No.
It doesn't?
No.
That's all it does?
It does by conditional use.
Right, by conditional use. So, it does permit it with conditional use. So, this is why we're here tonight to say, if you do this PFC, now they'll require, they'll have, they'll be able to make these thousand seat spectator seats, playing field and so forth. Under the R2, it's not permitted. That's why we're here tonight.
Explain what, when you do this, what does it allow you to, what it allows you to do? Enjoy this zoning?
Come up, please.
Could you please explain then, tonight, we're here to change this zoning. What will allow it?
Lynn, you and I have been friends a long time.
Yes.
Okay? In my estimation, what this allows us to do tonight is to give flexibility to the contextual framework for the school district to do the best for all of the students.
Okay.
Okay? It is just the beginning of the process. No sense leaving something in midair and not approving the zoning. This is not the end. This is the beginning. So, issues that you have, whether it be noise, whether it be trees, will all be addressed, I assure you of that, at the appropriate time in the process. All we're trying to do is make it legal for the school district to have the flexibility to approach how they do this. That's all.
Michael Barron was sworn in as well. Can I ask for clarification then why the school board would look for the change of the designation from R2 to commercial? And more from Mr. Brennan's perspective?
It's not commercial.
It's not commercial.
Well, it's a public facility zone. The most appropriate place for a school is in the public facility zone. It's not in the R2 zone. So, the characteristics of the PFZ are designed to accommodate a school. And it would be more appropriate for this property and others to be put in that proper zone. It's miszoned at the present time. This property was used as a golf course for many years, but it was owned for R2. And there were concerns about whether there'd be heavy residential development on that site. So, you know, we're doing the best we can. And the simple answer is, it's going in the PFZ because it's a public facility. It's a school.
Now then, does the, not the rights, but the regulations or what a builder is allowed to do under that zoning versus R2, and the concerns that residents have, do those, do they lose some ability to counter?
Well, anytime the district gets more flexibility, then yes, you know, so. But, but, oh, wait a second. But we don't think it's appropriate for the township and the district to be fighting over this unless it's absolutely necessary. Do you want, do you want to see that, lawsuits and money?
No, no, we're not fighting. We're trying to understand clarification of why the zoning, I mean, we probably should have done this early on, of what the zoning changes mean that would have, changing from R2 to the public use, what does that encompass overall of what people?
Well, it makes this project fit more appropriately into the proper zone and other properties that the township.
Just a minute, ma'am.
Now, does, is the township required to now replace the R2 that you're giving up?
No, no, we have plenty of R2.
Okay, so there was nothing named changing or proposed? That's what was just questions. So, if it's not, if it stays R2, then they can still build the school?
Not necessarily.
No.
There will be, there will be, there will be a number of hoops, there will be variants.
All right, hang on, folks.
This will go on forever.
Ma'am? Yes. Come up. Will you? Were you, were you sworn in?
He wasn't, okay.
I was not. I'd like to respectfully request to be sworn in, I was at work.
Raise your hand, please. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth? Testimony or statement you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
All right, please proceed.
I'd just like to read a quick statement. My name is Susan Schumacher. I live at 1432 State Road, which was Mary Jane Riley's house for many, many years, and it's, the picture's gone, but it's at the corner of Pot House and 29. As a citizen and taxpayer in Skookel Township for twenty-seven years, I have been respectfully tending meetings when I can of the school board, of the buildings and grounds meetings, and of this organization. I take offense when we're asked to be civil and screened out and shamed when we are in fact here. I don't appreciate statements that are punitive, and I know that there's a lot of emotion here. We're citizens and taxpayers, we should give respect, and we deserve respect, and I hope that can be the way to move forward. I'd like to say that in my opinion, we do not need six athletic fields, and we certainly do not need lights, public address systems, concession stands, or bleachers. Perhaps to dovetail with the Skookel Township mission to have open space preserved, there could be a limitation of the development of this property, and they could be practice fields with no structures installed, which would preserve some beautiful open space for the community, but not impose other hindrances on the property. Please remember that the place where you're building this school, which many have said is welcomed, we understand the welfare of the children, we support education and building the future of the community. Again, I've been here twenty-seven years and had three daughters. Do very well, we've appreciated the teachers and all the support we've had at Phoenixville Public Schools, Skookel Middle School and High School. But please remember that the place you're choosing is a residential area. We understand that it's already been a decision that's been made. The majority of the homeowners in this adjacent area of the golf course purchased the land when it was a golf course. I live in this neighborhood. I knew I was gonna hear noise from the high school, because the high school is an existing structure, and I knew that I was buying land nearby there. That's okay with me, I understand that. But what is potentially being proposed is going to increase light noise traffic with this kind of mega sports complex that's been discussed. So in closing, there are forty people at least out in the lobby here who have difficulty hearing the discussion, seeing the slides, or able to show that their hands are raised or show a response. I would ask that before any decision is made, that another forum be held that could accommodate a larger showing of the public, so that further discussion, hopefully civil and respectful discussion, and people would feel safe to ask questions, people wouldn't be attacked on either side, so that we could just have a little more clarity and move forward without so much conflict. Thank you.
My name's Dick Lynch, 32 Meadow Brook Lane.
Were you sworn in, Dick?
I was. I was back there, I did raise my hand. Just a point of clarification for the record. What I'm hearing you say is that what's permitted in this new zoning doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna happen.
Exactly.
That if we wanna fight for fewer seats, we can fight for fewer seats. We wanna fight for no lights, we can fight for no lights.
That's right.
And you will hear our pleas and take it under consideration.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Variances and-
I just wanna get that to the record.
That's true.
That is a fact.
Thank you.
Sir.
That's what I would recommend, for example, striking one thousand seats on this, and-
It's not the part of what we're doing tonight.
That is gonna be a specific, and it gives them an option to do whatever they want to do. If you don't have it in there, then they can't do it.
If I can address that, the-
To say that what you're doing here is really giving them more leverage, that basically can, you can basically stop it from, by dropping them. Also, the noise factor, the county region is recommending to do something about the noise when it goes outside. I don't hear anybody saying anything other than a few trees. It's not, it's not, and the other question we had is, um, the school voted against eminent domain, one of, I often wondered why, and I assume all the oxygen on exhaustion, there's another vote against it as well. So to, so I, I often wondered why Skookel Township, or the East Pikeville Township, didn't give more leeway to lots over there. My impression from watching the video online on the school board was that East Pikeville Township was not willing to cooperate with the school board.
Thank you.
There are no members on the school board from East Pikeville, they're all from Skookel and East Pikeville. Why is that?
Candidates can run from wherever they choose to do so.
But I'm wondering, there's five members on the school board from Skookel Township, and Skookel Township literally giving carte blanche to the school district. It seems to me that, uh, it's a conflict.
I can't agree with that. I, I don't think that's an issue, and I don't agree with that, by the way. Okay.
May I, may I close the meeting? Is there anyone else?
Do you need a motion?
No, I, I need a consensus that the, that the words have been spoken, everyone who's wished to speak has spoken. Therefore, the public hearing will be deemed to be closed. Now, as you know, this matter has been advertised publicly in accordance with the MPC. You have the right, but not the obligation, to vote on this proceeding this evening. What's before you cannot be amended, as Mr. DeJeseppi suggested, because it's a long process. You can't pull words out and change them. However, anything that's enacted tonight can be amended later by a subsequent ordinance. So while it is one package at this point, it's not forever in the sense that the township can always make amendments later. But having said that, we've been at this about two hours, the board now has the legal opportunity and ability to, to make a motion, pass, or reject, or take no action. So those are your options. The public hearing has been completed, and it's up to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve this, this ordinance as amended, and for the previous discussions we've had, and in consideration of the possibility that there may be a future amendment entertained down the road, as Mr. Brennan just spoke to.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any more discussion?
My only concern is, is with the concern of the residents here, is that we will have the ability to limit the number of seedings, limit the, the footage of space between the fields and the residents of Meadow Brook Lane, or expand it if we can, or if we have the ability to do it, is, that's my only concern. I have, I'm okay with the PFC zoning, as long as we have the ability at the planning commission and everything to go through that.
Exactly.
We got that understanding, and everybody understands that.
Kevin, let me be clear.
Yep.
The change would have to be another zoning change, so it'd be similar process.
Not, not quite, Bill. This could be, this could be an agreement between the school district and township on whatever issues-
Yeah, I think so.
A conditional.
Like, for my, there's no, right now, no lighting right now on the fields, right?
That is correct.
So there's no lightings at all?
No.
So that, really, no one's gonna play at night? And, and trust me, I live in the Madison Valley Forge, and I hear the band playing on Friday night. Trust me, I enjoy it for the whole ten minutes while I'm outside. But, but I don't live, I don't live right next to it, don't get me wrong. I mean, I live on the outside, I'm like, "Oh, wow, that's pretty loud." I mean, I can hear it. I mean, I'm in the back corner of Madison Valley Forge. But I'm okay with it. I mean, it's the fact that I wanna take consideration of all the residents, if we can eliminate, we, we gotta, we gotta do it. I mean, the, the school needs to be built, and trust me, I'm not a fan of having East Pikeville ship kids shipped to my township. Now, as chair of the police department, I gotta police, and as chair of the fire company, I gotta maintain and police and fire it. So that's additional cost to us that we have to worry about. But at the end of the day, we'll work on things in, in that nature. But as long as we now have lights, and we don't, we can limit the size of people, I'm okay with it. And the same, and the same.
And a lot of the concerns, and a lot of, and a lot of the concerns that you have can and would be, will be addressed in the future when it comes to the preliminary plans.
Yep.
Right now, this is just the zoning.
Just the zoning.
Just to give a, a paint of what could possibly be done. But when the plans actually come to play, we can sit down and we can say, "We don't want this, we want this to be limited," because it can all be done as a conditional, or-
A condition to the approval.
A condition to the approval, excuse me. Yeah, you're right, a condition to the approval of the plan. So, yes, we agree with everything you guys are saying, but it doesn't fit with what we're doing this evening.
But if you go away, you reject it.
He's out of order. He's out of order.
All right.
He's out of order.
I'm not sure what he's saying.
One more? We have, we have a motion on the floor, and it's been second. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
You're abstaining?
Yes.
What did Kevin Oder say?
I voted aye. I voted aye.